In the back in shirt?
Yeah, my name is John McDonald. My wife and I are here in Lake Zonia. About two weeks ago, we were asked to test surveys among the camp owners of Lake Zonia. There were two petitions that we were asked to give to these people and have them sub. Now, while most of the property owners on the lake do not have an option to vote in the town of Hopkinton, we do provide significant tax revenue to this town and the Parishville School District. We received input from approximately 50 of the camp owners. It would have been more if I had more time to do it, because I myself surveyed over half of these people. There were two petitions, okay? The first petition was opposed to the granting of a pilot for any tax deductions or discontinued assessments for the energy companies seeking to install wind turbines in our community. I believe it's important you know that the people that signed these petitions, some of them were for wind turbines, some of them were against wind turbines. Regardless of whether they were for them or against them, 90% of the people that signed these petitions were against the pilot, they were against any deduction in taxes for either DOA, which we understand is a Spanish company. We believe as a group that that company should be taxed at their full assessment of what the people in this room are, like the other people who live in Hopkinton and the businesses in Hopkinton. That was the first proposal, and again, it was for the tax, for the wind farm and not for the wind farm. 90% of them do not support any tax deductions for either DOA. The second petition that we had, if you have to excuse me, my, I gotta write this stuff everything and the rest of things. The second petition sought input from property owners south of Route 72, which includes everyone in Lake Zonia, okay? My understanding is, the proposal was essentially to include a ban of any wind turbines south of 72. It establishes a setback of five times the height of the wind turbines at 2,500 feet. It also established a maximum decibel level of 40 dB. Again, over 90% of the camp owners that signed this were in support of this proposal. So that gives you some input, factual input. We will continue to survey the people on Lake Zonia, but after almost 50% of camp of survey, 90% is consistently against any deduction in taxes and against anything south of 72. I have one other question for the town council, and again, I'm still educating myself, but I recently read a document authored by Scott McDonald, who is the lead senior business developer for Avonford Renewables. He's no relationship to me, okay? I'm not sure I understood the document entirely. He seemed to indicate that buildings not attached to public utilities, which do not have running water or are not hooked up to a sewer or septic system according to town laws or ordinances, should not be considered dwellings or residences and therefore would not qualify under any setback regulations. It has been my experience, though, most of the Amish homes.
I'm sorry, Mr. McDonald, three minutes is up.
They've asked you not to clap. They have the right to make the rules. The rule is not to clap. Please do not allow them to shut us down. The rule is don't clap. Please don't clap.
Let him finish his...
No, he had his three minutes. I'm sorry, we just let him do it.
You must...
I'm Teresa Drenlet. I live on 11B here, and I just want to know what he has to say, because he seems non-biased in either direction.
So my three minutes can go to him?
No, we can't. There will be time after for him to speak again. If John has talked, I hope maybe she can read it.
Somebody else want to take...
Next.
Sammy May. I recently read a document. We have to wait. Sammy's going right to another.
First of all, I'd like to say that I love everybody in this room. I'm not real happy with certain people, but I do love everybody in this room. They're my neighbors, my friends, my new acquaintances. For a year, many of us have been coming to these meetings. We have been trying to explain why those of us raised here, those who have stayed, and why those of us who have moved here came. It wasn't for easy living, fabulous shopping, or high-paying jobs. It's because we appreciate this place as it is: calm, clean, safe, neighborly, and natural. We aren't asking for more than that. We are asking that you do not allow that to be taken away from us. There are still many who struggle to make ends meet in the North Country, but they are not the people who would benefit from this project. They are the ones who would suffer the most: those with health problems, modest homes, on small lots, non-specialized job skills, and no ability to move away. They would be the ones that would bear the burden. It's not fair or moral to sacrifice the rights of many for the benefit of the few. As you know, over 300 Hopkinton residents and property owners have serious concerns about different aspects of this project. In the last few weeks, 152 of them south of Route 72 have signed a petition opposing expansion of the wind overlay zone into that area. That's 152 people. Please consider, there are only nine individuals, counting husbands and wives, with recorded leases there, and only one couple actually resides there. The developers' map shows four more sites where leases have not been found in county records, with only one more possible leaseholder living south of Route 72.
Are you finished? Thank you.
To finish his...
Your name again? I'm sorry.
My name is Teresa Drenlet. I live on 11B. This is, "I recently read a document authored by the Scott McDonald, who is the lead senior business developer from Avonford Renewables." He is no relic... Oh, you already read that part, so I forgive you for repeating. While I am not sure I understand the document entirely, he seems to indicate that buildings not attached to the public utilities, which do not have running water or are not hooked up to sewer or septic systems, according to town laws or ordinances, should not be considered dwellings or residences and therefore would not qualify under any setback regulations. It has been my experience that most Amish homes do not contain any of these amenities and therefore would not qualify under the 2,500-foot setback requirement, but the turbines could be placed as close as the company wanted to an occupied Amish home. Can you answer relative to wind turbine setback, how the town of Hopkinton defines a dwelling or residence? And can you direct your answers to the Amish folks in the audience?
My name is Gini Rice. I'm a KIA at Lake Zonia, and it's my understanding that this proposal for a wind farm in Hopkinton and Parishville is a proposal for a bid to have a farm, a wind farm, in Hopkinton or Parishville. That this is being submitted by the association to the state of New York with hundreds of other, hundreds of other towns and cities that are bidding on wind farms. That this is just one, it's a bid, it's not a done deal, and that when the, when the state chooses which proposals to choose, they decide on what the values and what the costs are, where it goes and how it goes, with some considerations of the town and the town's wishes. But that is my understanding, that this is a proposal that's going to bid and not a bid, not a done deal.
Amber Lindsay, Route 72, Hopkinton. "In the past month, I've had cause to drive through the wind farms in Chataque and Brainerdville. I took the time to stop and assess the sheer monstrous size of the turbines, the far-too-close proximity to many homes and farms. But most alarming of all was the noise level. Anyone who believes the noise is minor should take the time to look and listen personally. It is anything but minor. My heart goes out to the sorry souls who must now view, feel, listen to, and live with the constant flicker and shadows produced day and night, non-stop. I chose not to walk up to one for fear I would see dead birds and bats, which would have further compounded the profound sadness of these monsters of the sky. I was hesitant to knock on doors for fear it would simply be people who signed for a mere pittance of money to keep their opinions to themselves, no matter what they may live with now. They no longer have a choice, and that holds true for leaseholders. Now, no matter how they feel now, they are trapped in this scheme. Please open your hearts and minds to the adverse effects, and in fact, a very large portion of both of these communities, Hopkinton and Parishville, are concerned and rightfully and factually so. If I were not 64 years old, I would put my house up for sale, most likely take a huge loss on my investment, and move somewhere where I can feel safe and live the rest of my life in peace and comfort. Please remember the constituents and voters of these communities and let their voices bear merit and be heard. The wind advisory board thoroughly and carefully made their recommendations for this town. Please respect their wife's decisions and advice. It affects our entire community. A slight supposed reduction in property tax is certainly not 50%, and the pockets of leaseholders lined is not worth the price we will all pay. We are a community divided, and we can thank our good role from Spain, not the United States of America, for that. Thank you for your time and consideration to such an important town issue. We still have a choice here in Hopkinton. It is not too late to make the right one for everyone."
Debbie? Yeah?
Debbie Parker, Ring Road. "I'd just like to say, my husband and I are in favor of wind power. I didn't move here, I was born here, and I was raised in here, but my father was born there, his parents, grandparents, great-grandparents, the whole place of my family. We've been here for generations. I think it's an opportunity that I'd like to take part in. I don't have a speech written, I just wanted to voice my opinion. My husband and I both went to Chataque, turned the car off, listened intentionally. We didn't hear anything, and this was way back before any of this wind turbine came up, because we'd never seen it. We were on the way to Vermont, we stopped and said, 'Oh, look at them,' and we stopped, shut the car up, and listened. Nothing." There's a lot of propaganda that a lot of people believe, that you're gonna get cancer, you're gonna get, that... I think it's ridiculous, but everybody is entitled to their own opinion. I wouldn't force my opinion on anybody. I've seen people here, I've known my whole life, on that side, they didn't even look at me when I came in, because I'm on this side. And people, the respect the board, you ask them not to clap, they clap. You ask them to stand, they don't stand. Let's be adults. If the board asks us not to do something or to do something, snicker if they like, let's do it. And another thing, signaling people out like they can support any other community person, I think that's childish, name-calling, signaling people out. There's a lot of people in this community are very glad to be working for Nicky. Thank you."
Bill? Bill Converse, Hopkinton, for now. Looking at the proposed wind advisory laws, Article 3 talks about the creation of a wind overlay zone. It clearly says in paragraph D that the town board shall refer development of the wind overlay zone to the wind advisory board. Based on that, I'm not sure why we're voting to go against what the wind advisory board recommends as far as what the overlay zone should be and should not be south of Route 72. They have guidelines, the wind advisory boards, the stuff they need to look at when they consider what the overlay zone should include. And the comment is made, it's all scientific fact between one side of the road and the other, and why shouldn't we include that? One thing you're forgetting, one of the criteria is public opinion. And I was at most of the meetings for the wind advisory board, and the board listened to public opinion. Public opinion clearly, clearly stated they didn't want an expansion of the wind overlay zone. And I say expansion, even though theoretically we never had a wind, an overlay zone or original one, well, we did, in my eyes, okay? The town board voted that they had a set of properties they wanted to designate, the wind advisory board recommended it. A lawyer didn't do his job, is why we don't have one on the books. So when I say an expansion of the wind overlay zone, I think I'm accurate in saying that statement. Thank you.
Frank? Frank Bult. Well, we've pretty much heard everything. The CCRP, the good P. They were forced to update their DPSI twice because of misleading information they had previously entered. They couldn't even tell the truth, they were extinct. Photo simulations on CCRP sites show clustered turbines in an area within non... More misinformation. They look at the disclaimer at the bottom of the CCRP site. They do not assume any liability whatsoever for accuracy or completeness of any of their information, yet they haul armloads of it to you to read. Garbage. The idea that they've been bullying these two cameras, we experienced that walking into door by these gentlemen. It's normal. There was also talk around town against members of the board and members of the fire department, which is just cheap shots. The people making the comments have never served in any public, any public standing. These men here go into dangerous situations for new people, and yet, these two individuals decide to slander these two. The two individuals, concerned citizens, aren't worthy to walk in these guys' shadows. Cut out the personal attacks.
Thank you.
Yes, sir? You know, my name is Joe Pease, live in Hopkinton, Phoebe Road. I'm sick of hearing about bullying and about attacks. Talk about bullying, these people are trying to ram these turbines down our throats, okay? She says she doesn't want to force her opinion on anybody. What's going on here? What is this? Who are your mothers? Who raised you people?
I know who raised me. Don't.
I know.
What?
Let's not go there.
Obviously, you forgot.
This has to do...
No, I didn't.
Where I started here.
No, I didn't.
I'm right here and started.
Hold your own board to your same standard of...
Jeff, out.
You better get some more state troopers, you have to want to do it soon.
Out. Go.
Let's see it. Let's see how much our page is paid.
I want to live in my home. I don't want to have to move.
Jeff, you have...
There's a few people in this town really thinking about it, people. Who else besides the leaseholders wants this? Nobody. Why would you? Do you want to see them? Do you want to feel them? Do you want to get sick from them? And why are you two? What are you doing? Are you taking money? What's...
Enough! There will be no accusations, and yes...
That was a question. That was a question.
That is enough. That is enough.
I am...
I'm the taxes supervisor, she's going down.
I want you removed. You're disruptive.
Okay, go ahead. Do it.
Ma'am, could we have him removed?
You didn't break the law.
Can I go first before you? No.
That's a lot of pressure.
They don't prepare our roof layers. Yeah, we got it. The people don't want it.
She has to re-remine. Joe, were you finished?
I'm, I'm semi-peace. Thank you.
I have nothing prepared. My name is Robin Walton. My father and I came about six months ago. We stood in the back. He bought his house on Fletcher Road, but for my whole life growing up, I knew it as Catherinesville Road. It turns into Fletcher Road when you hit the Hopkinton State Line. It is south of Route 72, of course. It's across from the Catherinesville flats. I guess it's called the state land is across from my father's house. And he put all the electric lines in. They cost more than his house did to get the electric down there. He was the first house there after many, many years. He's in a nursing home now, and he can't see. Okay, so I'm gonna get emotional, I guess. And he can't see and he can't talk, but he wrote on a whiteboard that I should come to the meeting, because, you know, he'd never wanted these turbines. And as far as I can see, like, I don't know all the, I don't know all the statistics. I know they're on both sides. I know people here are very passionate, and of course, people say things they shouldn't. It gets personal and it shouldn't, but the bottom line I see is that it's about popular opinion. And if there, this is an open forum, and if most of the talk here is against the expanding the overlay zone, if it's against pilots, if it's against, you know, if it's about the most restrictive setbacks, that's what you have to listen to. You're here to represent this whole community, not just the people that are leaseowners. And I don't understand why it has to keep going and going and going. You can hear this, you can see it in the room. They had as much right to be at this meeting. The one woman who spoke, good for her. You know, that's her right to speak, and I, you know, I have no, I, you know, I respect that. But if everybody, if there's so many other people in favor of it, they should be here. And we've had, I mean, I know in Parishville, where my mother lives, I mean, I know she answered the questionnaire. I think my father, yeah, in Hopkinton did too. I mean, that was clearly against the turbines. So I, I mean, this room is clearly against the turbines. It just, it seems reasonable. It's a reasonable thing to do everything you can to stop them from coming here. We're all affected by it, whether we get cash in our pockets or whether these big monstrous things are, you know, within our sight. We're all affected. So I just feel like you have to listen to the people. That's what it's about. That's all.
Thank you. Kathy, did you want to state Chataque, Hopkinton? I'm so excited to be here tonight. After coming to all of the wind advisory meetings, and having to go through all this again, there's one person in this room on the board that has come to all the meetings, even came to all of the town board meetings in Parishville, all the planning board meetings in Parishville, and other meetings, and kudos to you, Sue. Whatever side you're on, you're tired. You other people, I don't mean to embarrass you, I'm just saying, you didn't come. And so I'm so tired of telling you, you missed it. You missed the show. And I'll tell you, my favorite warning was when Mike Lawrence... Is it? Yes, Mike Lawrence. Came from Brandon, big farmer, supervisor. And he said, "It got ugly. At one point, a black leather briefcase was set at his feet. Said, 'I didn't touch it. It might have been full of fresh underwear.'" But all of a sudden, board members had a 180 in their opinions. So I'm hoping none of you have fresh underwear on. Here's what I really want to tell you. I am from Hopkinton. You discredit anyone that's not from Hopkinton, even though they were born here and they go back 16 generations, and their families founded this town. I got more clout, because I live here. They live over the line, in the faraway town of Parishville, so it doesn't matter. You should. We're all one. It's our sister town. I live off the grid. I'm your neighbor, your father's neighbor, and I don't have electricity. I don't have indoor plumbing. I live as green as you can get. I live not as green as my Amish folks, but merely. And this is where you want to put 500-foot towers in my quiet woods, on top of the Catherineville Opera Room? If you don't know the difference in north of 72 and south of 72, then you don't know the difference in corn syrup and maple syrup. Kathy? Time to go back and forth. Kelly, how's Anna, Hopkinton? Now, the wind advisory board and the town board has been providing peer-reviewed studies and reports that show that wind energy development will not result in negative health and safety impacts. Yet, the local law has been revised again to incorporate more restrictive requirements that do not have any apparent purpose. If setbacks are designed for public safety, rather than trying to impose obstacles to wind development, the law should have a separate 500-foot setback from state land. State lands within the project are extensive and are actively used for many different purposes. The board has not provided any reason why a setback greater than the height of the turbines is necessary for the boundary of state lands. And there has been a lot of talk about DBs and affecting people and affecting children. Women's Health had a, an article about that. The blood moving through vessels in a woman, movement of stomach and intestinal movements reach a level of about 90 dB, the level of a background noise in an apartment next to an elevated tram. Yet, we seem to have normal, normal children being born. And that's a whole lot more than what they're asking for DBs for the law. And it's, you want to say that some are natural sounds and some are not. Sound is sound. Period. And that, that is true. And it's, yeah, I lived there in Airport, didn't keep me up. My husband lived near the Long Island Railroad, and it went by all day and all night. Yet, he turned out reasonably intelligent, and he slept nights. It's, a lot of it is people are afraid, and there's a lot of misinformation that has been put out there. And a lot of it is not true, but they have frightened people, and there are a lot of people who will not come to these meetings because they have gotten nasty. People who are pro-wind, probably some who are anti-wind too, but the people have gotten so rude, they will not come to a meeting. So it isn't just that we're outnumbered. Thank you. I know my daughter-in-law, she's like, "No, she can't." Hi. I know, I was on the phone. Mike Lawrence came to my door the other night, asking, "Sign a petition for this town." And I said, "Mike, turn around, tell me what you see." "This is sexy, Hopkinton." He said, "Exactly." "I'm at the highest point in learning." I said, "Am I going to the office at night? What do I see?" "I see the Robinson Tower, which is only 275 feet tall, and it's at low elevation. So I have standing at 630 feet tall, I will have plays spinning out all of my front windows, out my front yard, across my 450-foot road front, where my kids and my greatkids like to play. I don't want it. I also have code officers booked, and you're gonna have to get your code officer to look it up for you. Besides make activity, tall structures, was the last document that my code officer handed in when our town tossed the pro-wind law and made the restrictive law, so only small whacks are allowed. And Brandon also says 120 feet with no variance. You have a variance, you're gonna have tons of them, and there's never, never a base..."
We experienced that walking in the door by these gentlemen. It's normal. There was also talk around town against members of the board and members of the fire department, which is just cheap shots. The people making the comments have never served in any public, any public standing. These men here go into dangerous situations for new people, and yet these two individuals decide to slander these two. The two individuals, concerned citizens, aren't worthy to look at these guys' shadows. Cut out the personal attacks.
Thank you. Next. Yes, sir.
You know, my name's Joe Pease. I live in Hopkinton, DB Road. I'm sick of hearing about bullying and about attacks. Talk about bullying, these people are trying to ram these turbines down our throats. Okay? She says she doesn't want to force her opinion on anybody. What's going on here? What is this? Who are your mothers? Who raised you people?
I know who raised me.
I know.
No.
I know.
What?
Let's not go there.
Obviously, you forgot.
This has to do.
No, I didn't.
Where I got it here.
No, no, no.
I started writing and started.
Stop.
Hold your own board to your same standard.
Jeff, out.
You better hit some more state troopers if you want to do this.
Out. Go.
Let's see it. Let's see it on the front page of the paper.
I want to live in my home. I don't want to have to move.
Jeff.
There's a few people in this town really thinking about it, people. Who else besides the leaseholders wants this? Nobody. Why would you? Do you want to see them? Do you want to feel them? Do you want to get sick from them? And why are you two? What are you doing? Are you taking money? What's?
Enough. There will be no accusations. And yet.
That was a question. That was a question.
That's not. That is enough. That is enough.
I am.
The taxes, too, this is my damn office.
I want you removed. You're disruptive.
Okay, go ahead. Do it.
Ma'am, if we have him removed.
You didn't break the law.
Before you make a decision.
That's a lot of pressure.
They got prepared on everything.
Yeah, we got it.
Do you want me to?
She asked for a week of time. Did y'all hear you finished?
I'm, I'm seven, please.
I have nothing prepared. My name is Robin Walton. My father and I came about six months ago. We stood in the back. He bought his house on Fletcher Road, but for my whole life growing up, I knew it as Catherinesville Road. It turns into Fletcher Road when you hit the Hopkinton state line. It is south of Route 72, of course. It's across from the Catherinesville flats. I guess it's called the state land is across from my father's house. And he put all the electric lines in. They cost more than his house did to get the electric down there. He was the first house there after many, many years. He's in a nursing home now, and he can't see. Okay, so I'm gonna get emotional, I guess. And he can't see and he can't talk. But he wrote on a whiteboard that I should come to the meeting, because, you know, he'd never wanted these turbines. And as far as I can see, like, I don't know all the, I don't know all the statistics. I know they're on both sides. I know people here are very passionate, and of course, people say things they shouldn't. It gets personal, and it shouldn't. But the bottom line I see is that it's about popular opinion. And if there, this is an open forum. And if most of the talk here is against the expanding the overlay zone, if it's against pilots, if it's against, you know, if it's about most restrictive setbacks, that's what you have to listen to. You're here to represent this whole community, not just the people that are leaseowners. And I don't understand why it has to keep going and going and going. You can hear this. You can see it in the room. They had as much right to be at this meeting. The one woman who spoke, good for her. You know, that's her right to speak. And, you know, I have no, you know, I respect that. But if everybody, if there's so many other people in favor of it, they should be here. And we've had, I mean, I know in Parishville, where my mother lives, I mean, I know she answered the questionnaire. I think my father, yeah, in Hopkinton did too. I mean, that was clearly against the turbines. So I, I mean, this room is clearly against the turbines. It just, it seems reasonable. It's a reasonable thing to do everything you can to stop them from coming here. We're all affected by it, whether we get cash in our pockets or whether these big monstrous things are, you know, within our sight. We're all affected. So I just feel like you have to listen to the people. That's what it's about. That's all.
Thank you. Kathy, did you watch this tape?
Kathy, Hopkinton. I'm so excited to be here tonight. After coming to all the meetings, wind advisory meetings, and having to go through all this again. There's one person in this room on the board that has come to all the meetings, even came to all of the town board meetings in Parishville, all the planning board meetings in Parishville, and other meetings. And kudos to you, Sue. Whatever side you're on, you're trying. You other people, I don't mean to embarrass you. I'm just saying, you didn't come. And so I'm so tired of telling you. You missed it. You missed the show. And I'll tell you, my favorite one was when Mike Lawrence. Is it?
Yes, Mike Lawrence.
Came from Brandon, big farmer supervisor. And he said, "It got ugly." At one point, a black leather briefcase was set at his feet. Said, "I didn't touch it. It might have been full of fresh underwear." But all of a sudden, a couple board members had a 180 in their opinions. So I'm hoping none of you have fresh underwear on. Here's what I, here's what I really want to tell you. I am from Hopkinton. You discredit anyone that's not from Hopkinton. Even though they were born here, and they go back 16 generations, and their families founded this town. I got more clout because I live here. They live over the line, in the faraway town of Parishville. So it doesn't matter. It should. We're all one. It's our sister town. I live off the grid. I'm your neighbor, your father's neighbor, and I don't have electricity. I don't have indoor plumbing. I live as green as you can get. I live not as green as my Amish folks, but merely. And this is where you want to put 500-foot towers in my quiet woods on top of the Catherineville aquifer? If you don't know the difference in north of 72 and south of 72, then you don't know the difference in corn syrup and maple syrup. Kathy. Time to go back and forth, Kelly, Hopkinton. Now, the wind advisory board and the town board has been providing peer-reviewed studies and reports that show that wind energy development will not result in any of health and safety impacts. Yet the local law has been revised again to incorporate more restrictive requirements that do not have any apparent purpose. If setbacks are designed for public safety rather than trying to impose obstacles to wind development, the law should have a separate 500-foot setback for state land. State lands within the project are extensive and are actively used for many different purposes. The board has not provided any reason why a setback greater than the height of the turbines is necessary for the boundary of state lands. And there has been a lot of talk about DBs and affecting people and affecting children. Women's Health had a, an article about that. The blood moving through vessels in a woman, movement of stomach and intestinal movements reach a level of about 90 dB, the level of a background noise in an apartment next to an elevated train. Yet we seem to have normal children being born. And that's a whole lot more than what they're asking the DBs for. You want to say that some are natural sounds and some aren't. Sound is sound. Period. And that, that is true. And it's, yeah, I've lived there, in airport, didn't keep me up. My husband lived near the Long Island Railroad, and it went by all day and all night. Yet he turned out reasonably intelligent, and he slept nights. It's, a lot of it is people are afraid. And there's a lot of misinformation that has been put out there. And a lot of it is not true, but they have frightened people. And there are a lot of people who will not come to these meetings because they have gotten nasty. People who are pro-wind, probably some who are anti-wind too. But the people have gotten so rude, they will not come to a meeting. So it isn't just that we're outnumbered. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know, I know my daughter in Hopkinton, because I live here.
I know. I was on the phone with you.
Mike Lawrence came to my door the other night down there. He signed a petition for this. And I said, "Mike, turn around. Tell me what you see." This is actually Hopkinton. He said, "Exactly." I'm at the highest point you've ever been. I said, "Mike, over the mountain at night, what do I see?" I see the Robinson Tower, which is only 275 feet tall, and it's at low elevation. So I have standing at 630 feet tall. I will have plays spinning out all my front reaches, out my front yard, across my 450-foot road fronting where my kids and my grandkids like to play. I don't want it. I also have code officers booked, and you're gonna have to get your code officer to look it up for you. The seismic activity, tall structures, was the last document that my code officer handed in when our town tossed the pro-wind law and made the restrictive law so only small whacks are allowed. And Brandon also says 120 feet with no variance. You have a variance, you're gonna have tons of them. And there's never, never a phase one without a phase two across the world, which I have been studying since 2004, and I have kept up on most of it. I've worked with people. I've worked with doctors, scientists. I've worked with people from both sides. You know, I visited, I don't know how many of them. Don't do it. Our town is just now healing. It took eight years to fight what we won. And it's just time, same time of year when they had the public hearing. And our board members, since there were two of them an hour after election, said, "Let's table this until the election, because we don't know if we're gonna be sitting on this board. We don't know who's going to be having to handle this." So that's a couple of suggestions I have. The other suggestion is the opinions have got to go. They've got to go. Represent the majority of the people. Not your opinion. Your opinion is not the majority opinion. It doesn't count. And I'm telling you what. Now we move down my road, and people wave. We threw that law away, but in 2008. They're starting to wave again. It's down 2017. It's sad. I moved up from a big city to get out of industry. And you say there's no jobs here? My grandson who graduated SUNY Canton's stayed for Mother's Day. He was in classroom working Monday morning. The job they hired too much for him. There's jobs.